Okay, thank you. We'll roll into attendance again. Mary, you want to take attendance?
Do we do the, do we want to do the class first or?
No, we don't really need to.
We already said it once.
Sure.
We're just back in open session.
Absolutely. Attendance, President Shaver.
Here.
Vice President Dr. Reeves.
Here.
Secretary Summers, excused. Treasurer Hanser, present. Trustee McDonough, excused. Trustee Schultz.
Here.
Trustee Whitney.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, changes to the board agenda?
There are none.
School presentations. Mr. McDevitt. Leonard, Leonard, Leonard.
I always like to hear what's going on. Good evening. I'm Paul McDevitt. I'm the principal at Leonard Elementary School. And I have a few of my friends here with me. Go ahead, stand up. You guys can stand up right up here with me. We're really excited about the 23-24 school year at Leonard. Some of our goals for this year is to enhance our math instruction interventions delivery, implement our PBIS program. Last year was a year of us designing it, putting in a few pieces, but really working with staff behind the scenes. This year was our year to really roll it out with our students and make it a part of our everyday. And then, of course, celebrating our successes. It's always important to celebrate, especially in the elementary schools. For our math, some of the ways we are looking at this is we are excited about strengthening our math interventions. As you probably remember from those who were here last year during all of the elementary presentations at the board meetings, we talked about our win time. Win time is what I need. And it's scheduled into the special schedule every single day where kids who need extra support in reading and math can get that, and kids who need enrichment projects can get that. Every student is involved with their own personalized time during the school day. And one of those is students who need math intervention. We use a program we started last year in this math intervention called Delta Math. And this year, we're adding math fluency visual cards, which is part of that program, but it's a new piece to it. It was used a little bit in summer school, and it got some really good reviews from the teachers who used it. We're going to be providing additional training for our parapros that deliver this math instruction, especially in the use of these fluency visual cards. And then, at the end of this year, we are going to evaluate the Delta Math program to see if it's doing what we want it to do. This is our second year of using it, so we'll have enough data to really make some good decisions on that. Another thing we're really ramping up in the elementaries this year is our use of MobiMax. MobiMax is a computer program that supplements what we call our tier-one instruction, which is our classroom instruction. All students in grades second through fifth will spend a minimum of 30 to 60 minutes weekly on MobiMax. What's neat about MobiMax is it can be used as a tool to review. It can be used as a tool to enrich for those kids who are at grade level or above grade level, to take them to where their exact place is. It can identify and close gaps. There is a piece to it that is kind of like a pre-test that you take and identifies where your gaps are. So even if you're a fourth-grade student, there's some things, holes, that you may have from second or third grade that need to be backfilled in. When a fourth-grade curriculum doesn't necessarily do that when you're working in a math curriculum, but when you use a tool like MobiMax, it can tailor for where you need. And to make sure that we're not making it feel like another thing that the teachers have to do, an extra thing on top of everything else, we are working with our teachers and our staff on identifying those places where it fits naturally, such as morning work when they first come in. They can sign right onto their MobiMax while teachers doing lunch counts and attendance and all that kind of stuff. They can get their 15, 20 minutes in. When they come back from recess and everybody's riled up, they can go right into this before they start into their reading curriculum. Those are what we call soft starts. It can be a station during math workshop. During math workshop, sometimes kids will rotate 15 minutes around different stations. MobiMax might be one of those stations. It can be used as homework. It could be used as something that they do during their win time as well. Our PBIS program, as I said, that's one of our goals that we are, this is our implementation year. We've created lesson plans for all of the different areas of our school, created posters that go with those lesson plans. Some of those areas are such as cafeteria, recess, hallways, restrooms. And we've actually taught these lessons now to the entire school, bringing in one class at a time to a hallway. And one of the PBIS team members go through that lesson plan and teach the kids what the expectations are when you're in the hallway. We've created voice levels, so it's universal language throughout our school, zero, one, two, three. The kids know exactly what that means. We've implemented our learner profile of the month through our IB coordinator, and we have an assembly every month where we recognize students who are exemplary in that learner profile. So as teachers see kids being principled, which is our September learner profile of the month, at the end of this month, we'll have an assembly, and there'll be some students of the months in all the different classes throughout the school that will receive awards for being a student of the month. Different types of prizes that they can win. For example, a ice cream party with the principal if they're student of the month for that month, or different things we're going to rotate throughout the entire year to make it exciting for the kids. We also have our pride tickets. We started this last year, and it's really exciting that every day, throughout the entire day, kids receive pride tickets for doing good things. And when the teachers see them, see them in the hallway sometimes, I can write them, secretaries can write them, nunnas can write them, parapros write them. Kids receive tickets, and they put them in a jar. Every week, we draw several names out of the jar, and the kids can come down and draw prizes out of our big treasure chest of prizes. We've added a behavior interventionist to the elementary school, and this person is an extra tier of behavior support, but also it really, in our school, really helped bridge the gap between our PBIS team, which typically meets before school, after school, during the summer, and our nunnas. Nunnas can't meet before school. They can't meet after school. They can't be there in the summer. So there's a little disconnect there. This really has been very beneficial for us to have this person who is part of our PBIS team, hears what's going on, sees the things that we want to do in the school, and then takes it back and works with the nunnas every single day on how we're going to implement this. And we've made a lot of changes in the way that we run our lunch, in the way that we run our recess, and they've all been very positive. A lot of it has to do with this behavior interventionist piece that we've put in there. For example, a small thing, it was really difficult last year when we were doing the pride tickets. We knew it was important to get that as part of the recess and lunch, but having nunnas standing out in the winter writing pride tickets and trying to give them to kids to hold on with their mittens and take inside really wasn't working. So we bought some stamps, and now we have hand stamps that they can stamp kids in lunchroom or stamp them out in the recess. And when they get in, they can show their teacher, and their teacher gives them the pride ticket for the lunchroom or the recess, and they can take that down and put it in the bag. So we've been able to develop some new things. We've also defined a consistent system of discipline that went out to teachers that have different tiers of behavior. Now, I know that the "you matter" is our model this year, and it's very important, but it's been important for a long, long time. It's not like it's new, like we all started mattering this year. We've always really wanted to make sure that our parents, our students, and our staff know that how important they all are in the development of our kids. Some of the things that we're doing, and a lot of it we've done in the past too, is with our students, our whole PBIS system is designed to make kids feel like they matter, that they're noticed being good, and not just when they get in trouble. But we're trying to really pump up that positive behavior with the student of the month and the pride tickets and the celebrations and the assemblies, the social-emotional learning lessons that go on with the FSLs in the classroom. Last year with our staff, like every school every year, we have our teacher appreciation week, which seems like it grows and gets bigger and more fun each year. Last year, we also did, and we continue, we're going to continue with these things this year, our support staff appreciation luncheon, where we bring in all the parapros, the secretaries, the building subs, the cafeteria workers, the custodians, all of those people who don't have a certain special date that they get recognized. We bring them all together, and we cater a lunch, and we have a big lunch for them. The kids make them cards, and there's signs hanging up and things like that. That was a lot of fun last year. We did a bus driver appreciation breakfast last year, where after they dropped the kids off, they were all invited in. We had 100% participation. Of all the bus drivers, they came in, and the kids had made signs and cards and stuff like that to give the bus drivers, and we had flowers for them, and we had a nice big breakfast for them. And then, of course, our nunnas, we had an appreciation lunch after their shift one day where they came in, and we had a catered lunch just for them. Some of our points of pride. One of our special education parapros, Amanda Soriano, she was named the Oakland County Support Person of the Year last year. And she, people from Oakland schools came out to Leonard and surprised her and gave her the award, and that was a lot of fun. We got our new therapy dog last year, Leo, for Leonard. He joined our Leonard family, and he's well-received, and the kids love having Leo around our school. We have our fifth-grade mentor program. It's something we're going to, we're very proud of, and we're going to talk a little bit more about it with some of my fifth graders that I have up here. The fifth-grade students get paired with incoming kindergartners, and we've done this for several years. And they spend the first week of school as their mentor, and they get to know each other. They take them to lunch. They take them out on the playground. They show them all the different areas on the playground that they can play. They push them on the swings. And the fifth graders love it because they get their own recess, and then they get to go to another recess. But they, you know, they help them in lunch, and they get to know them. And then, we have dates throughout the year where they reconnect. And it really also helps in a lot of other ways too, besides just the beginning of the year mentorship. It helps the fifth graders realize that they have a leadership role and a responsibility. And if I have fifth graders who are screwing around or not making good choices, I can remind them that their mentor kindergarten student is looking up to them, and it really helps give them a lot of meaning in what they're doing. Leonard Safety Patrol is phenomenal. Last year, we had a record 44 students on our safety patrol, which in our fifth-grade class, that was like 77% of the students. This year, we have 46, which is over 90% of our fifth graders are involved in our safety patrol. And safety patrol does a lot more than just stopping kids from walking across the street. Because we have so many of them, we've developed roles and posts throughout the school for a lot of things. And I'm going to have some of our fifth graders kind of talk a little bit about some of the things that they do as both safety patrol and mentors. So Mitchell, you want to go first and talk about what you do as safety patrol captain?
So what I do as an afternoon safety patrol captain is I make sure that all of the afternoon safety patrolers are being responsible, being respectful, and making sure that they're at their posts on time. And also, I'm making sure that the number-one priority to them is making sure that every kid and parent is being safe. So what the crosswalk people do is whenever a bus goes by, they stop them from walking the road. And what they do is they make sure no kids, adults, or preschoolers are, and even staff at the school are making sure that they are safe and not getting hit by a car or a bus.
Vinny, what are some other things that safety patrol does?
Safety patrol, like say, there's a whole bunch of posts all around the school, and they can do a lot of stuff. Like, say, one is you pick up recess equipment and you put in soccer goals for the week. And then, another one would be like a hall monitor. Like, you could walk around the halls and make sure people are saying stay, saying stay, staying, and not running in the halls and make sure they're walking.
Caleb, what are some of the things that you do?
My post for the safety patrol, I make sure kids get off the bus safely, and I'll go on the bus after all the kids got off and ask if everybody's off, and they'll check the bus. Because some, once the kid fell asleep on the bus and went back, so now I have to walk some kids into their classes to make sure they got there, and I check the buses to see if anybody else is still on, like, fell asleep or anything.
Our safety patrol also plays a very important role in dismissal. Each safety patrol member, like he said, has their own station. One of those stations is each one's assigned to a bus to make sure that they know all the kindergartners that ride that bus, and they go to each classroom and get those kids. So as the buses are called, we make sure those kids get on the right bus. And throughout the year, they get to really know who's on their bus and who's not, so they know if someone's missing or if someone's in that line that shouldn't be in that line. So that's a very important piece. And as Vinny said, you know, we even have stations going out and cleaning up the playground at the end of the day. You know, if there's balls out there, your job is to go collect everything, bring in the soccer nets on the weekends and some things like that. So having 46 kids gives us lots of opportunities and lots of helpers throughout the school. And when you have such great leaders like these fifth graders, it's really useful. Tell us a little bit about the kindergarten mentor program.
Okay, so the fifth-grade kindergarten program is to make sure what, that the kindergartners are, at lunch, they are, know where they go in the hallways, leading them to where, like, where the bathroom is and where the recess doors are. We also make sure that when it's time to line up after recess, we make sure that they get in their line and walk quiet down the halls back to their classrooms.
I bet they like having a big kid as a helper, don't they?
They do.
They look up to us.
Oh, yeah.
And as I said in the beginning, it's going to be a great year, and we're looking forward to it.
Sure. Thank you. Great job. Okay. Great presentation. I always like to hear what's going on at Leonard. Thank you for coming. You guys do things very unique over there, and it always is good, good stuff.
Leonard rocks.
So, okay. Scheduled public comment for agenda items only. We can have just one, and it is Mr. Blake again.
Thank you. Tonight, before the board votes on how you're going to handle the old contract and the addendum and all that, I just wanted to make a few points. The issues that I see with the original contract. First of all, more than half of the letter was dedicated to listing the rights and powers of Varnum to control the investigation and report. It strains credulity to believe that the primary purpose of the contract was to spell out who was responsible to pay for the report, as was claimed by GuidePost. I was also told that the contract was just standard boilerplate. Really? GuidePost has a standard contract they use in investigating school shootings? Kind of hard to believe. A new contract should be drawn up by a law firm with no connection to Varnum or the insurance carriers for the district. It should clearly state that the purpose of the investigation is to determine what happened and which individuals were involved. It should be crystal clear that the investigation is to be totally transparent, with no influence from Varnum, any other law firm, or the board. There should be no addendum. That just muddies the water. We need to be very careful about clarity. I found it very disconcerting when I read the proposed addendum, and it stated, and I quote, "The report will be released to the community and the board at the same time." Note, there's nothing about when Varnum gets it. It's things like this that further erode confidence in the transparency of this investigation. I asked the board to insist on voiding the original contract and having a new one drawn up that truly demands an independent investigation, free of outside influences. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Okay, moving on to Section 5 Consent Agenda. We've got our minutes from both the 22nd and the 29th. We've got the HR update and the bills payable. Anybody want to make a motion? Mary?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, can I have support for that, please? Colleen? Discussion on the consent agenda? No discussion? Okay, vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent's report?
We have two tonight, very exciting. I think we're going to go with Anita. You'll be first. Parent University. This is, pardon? It's fine. We'll just switch the order. Parent University is fine. We'll hear from Anita first, and then you're going to hear how we're going to attempt to grow more teachers, from Ryan. So we'll.
No, that's next.
Oh, that's right. I moved you to next week, to the next meeting. It really is exciting. I'm so excited when you get to hear that. But, right, this is Anita's show. Ryan comes at the next board meeting. Sorry about that. Thank you. Go ahead, Anita.
So, good evening. I am pleased to be here today to present a couple of exciting pieces of information for you. So the first is Parent University. By now, you and the community have received the hot word communications about Parent University. We launched it this school year, but it really, the work started and the vision started for right before the pandemic struck, and so the work was a little bit, a lot of it tabled. And we were able to bring it back at the right time, I think even more essential time. Parent University is a model that is used across the nation, really, and we've learned a lot in collaboration with our neighbors in Lake Orion, or as people like to remind them, Lower Oxford. So they have been really helpful in helping us to launch ours. So what is Parent University? It's a series of workshops. It could be videos, just one-page resources, but essentially, opportunities for parents and caregivers, and sometimes students, to help them learn about various educational topics, essentially to be able to help their child navigate school and life. The current offerings are based on our current needs, so a lot of Parent Universities have various staple pieces, but we really focused ours on what our district needs at this time. And really, they will continue to be updated. We've already added a couple since we've launched it. Soliciting input on sessions to be considered or offered. We sent out a survey to families about that too, and we've already gotten some input from families on what we should consider offering. There is, I'm going to just show you briefly, and hopefully it doesn't, a website, or a portion of our website has been dedicated to Parent University, and we're grateful for Danny for building it very quickly and efficiently. But all of the events that we have planned to this point through December are already posted, and they have various audiences. So what's gone home so far is we have a suicide prevention training with North Oakland Community Coalition tomorrow evening. Not too late to sign up if anybody wants to go. Cyber safety being done with the sheriff's department, where he'll go through, actually, if you click on it, you can get a brief description. So identity theft, unfortunately, cyberbullying, violence, phishing, anything that is impacting kids right now when it comes to safety online. And the registrations forms are there. And then, there's a session on bullying, excuse me, what it is, what it's not, and what signs to look for in your child if that might be happening. So those are our September sessions, and then you can see going all the way down, as we work through September, I would imagine Danny's going to start adding the rest of December and then January. So we have quite a few planned, but we'll continue to be responsive to the needs that come up in the community. So the goals of the Parent University is to maximize our student outcomes. So when our families are feeling equipped and knowledgeable about how to help their kids navigate school or a certain situation that could impact school, their outcomes will be better. We want to increase an understanding of teaching and learning, so you'll see, I'm actually helping to facilitate a session next month called "I'm Not Good at Math" with our math specialist at Lakeville. So some of that is just even about teaching and learning and academics. And then, we want to provide opportunities for families to connect with one another because the sessions that we've had, last year, we did a CELO, a couple of CELO workshops. The parents that attended really learned from talking to each other too, like, how do you handle this? And they were able to give each other tips as well. You can expect monthly communication, so I think next week, we will launch the October dates because the first one is October 2nd, and so we want to make sure we give everybody a fair opportunity to register. They will be reinforced by building communication, so whether in the building newsletters or a separate email from administrators. And we really need a minimum of five people registered to hold the workshop, just for it to be meaningful. It's hard to give a presentation that you prepared for a group one-on-one. And so all of our workshops for September have surpassed that, and that's not going to be an issue. There we go. And then, continuous development, so we'll continue to evolve, add as needed, and reflect on the feedback that we get and make changes as we go. This is just a flyer that went out to our families about the September workshops.
Where are they usually held at?
Depends. Some of them are.
You move them around?
The suicide one is at OHS tomorrow. The cyber safety and bullying are at OMS. Some will be at the elementary schools. So anyone can attend, no matter the school they attend. It's just going to be that location that we're holding it. Part of it is thanks to Angela, working facility scheduler, working around sports, and other meetings, or Legos, or robotics, and.
Right.
So trying to find locations. But they're open to any.
Anybody can come.
Oxford schools, yeah, family.
Some are age-specific.
Oh, yes, thank you, Todd. And some are age-specific. So we do indicate the age that it's appropriate for, for families and for students if they're And then, just beyond September, we do have listings, like I said, on the website through December, but we'll continue to add those. The website will be updated as we update our offerings. And then, if a presenter, sometimes presenters are not always willing to give us the materials, but if they're able to give us materials, like the one that I'm doing on math, it's very easy. We'll upload the material so people can, if who wanted to come and couldn't come or want to get back to it, can have the resources to look back to. And then, I want to point out, this was a new addition since we published the October one. We are adding on October 2nd, a Understanding Threat Assessment and OK to Say. So we'll be working with Dr. Melissa Reeves. She's got a lot of credentials there, you can see. She is the main trainer for our threat assessment protocol, and she's trained all of us in the district. She'll be coming out, and she'll be working with the Michigan State Police, Don Ferguson, who will offer a session on that to our families who are interested. And then, there's a Love and Logic offering to our infant through preschool families. So we're really trying hard to reach all of our families in a variety of ways. There's a special education offering, creating visuals and routines for home, that's an elementary offering, and then Understanding Threat Assessment. And you can see, it just keeps going. We have a lot of partners who are making this happen, including Lakes Area Youth Assistance, Easter Seals, North Oakland Community Coalition, and then our own in-house awesome experts. So that's it on Parent University.
I'm very excited.
Wow, that's amazing. That's a lot. That's a lot of offerings. Fantastic.
It's a lot of great work, Anita. Quick question, are you going to have post-session evals to the families that show up, so that way we can kind of monitor on.
Yes.
Making sure that what we're doing is hitting, hitting what they need and are looking for?
Yes, that's our goal. Thank you. I should have included that. That's our goal.
No, that's great. I think it'd be great to hear back in a few months to see how attendance has been, engagement has been, and some of the feedback you've received already, because I think it's really cool and exciting. Great work.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a team effort, for sure. We've all been, all of us are pulling together to make it happen, so thank you. And then, this is, that's great, because I'm super passionate about parent engagement, but I'm really even more passionate about our kids. So this is, I'm really happy. but I'm really even more passionate about our kids, so this is, I'm really happy to be presenting this to you. So, you know, it's a lot lighter in the summer, but not near an Oxford. We have a lot going on in the summer, and we are proud for how much we can engage our students and our staff during the summer. So, a little summer engagement by the numbers. We operated 15 programs, 15 different programs for all ages, including infants through high school, food service during the summer. We employed over 100 staff members this summer, so 100 staff members didn't really get a summer break, and that was their choice, they wanted to work and be with our kids. That includes food service, transportation, driving kids to and from school if needed, our teachers, paras, FSLs, I mean, name it, we had people working in it. It's incredible. We can't do what they do, what we do, without their dedication. We engaged 2,338 kids this summer. And I tried really hard to pull out duplicates, so there are kids that did all the things this summer. They were in, maybe they came to summer school, but they also did summer camp, and so we tried hard to pull out any duplicates. And food service served 13,587 meals to our kids this summer, our kids and families. So, just a little, I'm sorry if it feels like lots of pictures, but I think pictures are worth a thousand words, and the pictures are reminders of why we do what we do. Summer Camp and Care at OELC, my own son participated in that, in the tattoo program. I have a two-year-old there who is obsessed with school, he loves it. So, you can see, they, they engaged 197 kids, including babies, over the summer through fifth grade. They had a focus on communities, so they, you know, the high school robotics kids came in and worked with the kids. They worked with the Oxford Library, the helper trucks came in. I, I got a really great picture with my son on a huge tractor, which he loved. And then they had lots of different field trips. You can see Seymour Lake Park, the movie theater, Frosty Boy.
I don't know if they're right things in Oxford.
Yeah.
Getting trained in them.
And I just want to point out, too, like, you know, the fire department, all the community helpers that come in to do that.
Right.
That bring in all the equipment and then work with all the kids, it's, it's pretty incredible. Summer learning, we had 467 students, K-12, and engaged in learning, that includes seated and virtual. So, we had 276 elementary, middle school, and seated elemen, or seated summer school experience. We had 56 online students, and then we had 135 kids involved in credit recovery. At the elementary level, we, using some at-risk funding, some 31A funding, we offer our buildings opportunities to do some small group work as well. And so, we had 240 students engaged in reading and math programs that are operated at the local level at each building. And again, you can see how many adults and staff members are bringing kids in, they're playing math games, they're doing, you know, phonics games, or, you know, making learning fun, book clubs. OES operated, ran a book club for, for kids this summer, word games. And then, we also offered all of our families an opportunity to do an at-home learning experience, which was through Degrask, and 178 families participated in that. Also new this year is Jump Starts. We also added a Lego opportunity to not only summer school, but also an additional week at camp, which Shannon Schaefer ran. And the Jump Stars, Jump Starts were days where kids can come in prior to school starting to get acclimated to the school setting, or, you know, shake off any nervousness. So, we had 225 kids total, Leonard, or, I'm sorry, Lakeville alone had 175 kids participate in that. And you can see the different things they did, you know, a circle of, a restorative circle there, setting goals before school started, and then you see some math games that they were playing. And so, just getting comfortable for school and the skills for learning. And I mentioned, summer feeding was operated at Oxford Elementary, and 13,587 meals were served. We also ran some summer engagement activities around social-emotional learning. And so, the coordinators and the staff really made this fun. So, if they were doing problem-solving, as an example, they were building things, or making things out of boxes and doing a maker space. If they were studying bravery, they brought in a variety of animals, to, you know, large snakes, reptiles, things like that, where the kids could, you know, take risks and, and hold. Most kids are not scared, but it's pretty impressive. So, those are our various events. We had 1,031 students and families attend those. There was a parking lot party for our secondary, we had a movie night, a family movie night. So, lots of experiences there. Here are some, secondary, you can see that large snake there. That takes bravery, like, I would not, I'd be in the same room as that, but, yeah.
Joe Pad doesn't look too nervous.
He really doesn't.
No?
Nope, he does not.
He's just not holding the snake though.
But I still wouldn't be able to stand there if that was behind me, so, yeah. And then, just honestly, I couldn't decide what pictures to include, so I added more pictures of all of our wonderful kids and community members. You can see even our OVA students would gather at a park. So, everybody was included in this. And all the spaces were being...
Lot of reptiles in these pictures.
It really fun for our custodians to get our buildings ready for summer.
Yeah. Very good, Anita.
Again, team effort, I'm just presenting, so...
Thank you very much. Great to see everything from virtual being included to OELC, all the way up to high school kids, and everybody in between. That is servicing our whole student body. When we say everybody matters, that's really what we mean.
I, I have to say that, been in a lot of districts with a lot of summer programs, but the breadth of, of what has, was offered here over the summer, to the number of students that got to participate, truly was more outstanding than, than anything I'd had experienced before. So, it really was a great team effort, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely amazing, thank you, Anita, and team.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to our Board of Education Matters. Okay. The Letter of Understanding from Varnum and Guideposts LLC, tabled on August 29th, 2023, is returning for discussion and consideration. Do I have a recommendation?
Read the motion.
Okay.
I'll just read the motion. Move to accept and sign the letter of understanding as presented by Varnum LLP and Guidepost Solutions LLC.
Do I have support? Colleen? Discussion?
So, can we talk about what we have in front of us? This is, this was updated from, based on our last discussion, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so, the numbers were added as was requested, and there was some clarity added as was requested by the board, correct?
Okay. In addition, there was a, an additional legal opinion collected. Yes. So, everything that was discussed at the last meeting, and, and asked by... And asked by board members to look into, we did. And this letter is what has come out of it.
Ron is here tonight, if there's any more questions for him. He is here to address anything that you might want to address in terms of the revised letter. But it fills, I checked my notes from the last board meeting, and this appears to address everything that I noted the board members had brought up at the table at the time.
Do you want to go through them, kind of just each, each item?
The bullet points?
The seven items? Yeah?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you.
I, I'll just describe them generally, of course, they're there in writing. The, the first bullet point describes the general scope of work that had been previously announced and was on Guidepost's website. That indicates that Varnum was engaged by the board in May of 2022 to conduct the independent investigation into the shooting and the response to the events, as well as the policies and processes related to the safety of the district's students, staff, and the broader Oxford community. The second one reflected that Varnum engaged Guidepost pursuant to the board's vote on that at the time Varnum was engaged, and that that was memorialized in the engagement agreement that was executed on May 26. The third bullet point indicates that at the conclusion of the investigation, a single final report will be issued that addresses the shooting, the events leading up to the shooting, and the district's response. And the fourth bullet point states in substance that the report's gonna be issued on or before October 30, 2023, and that it will be provided to the board at the same time that it's provided to the public. The fifth bullet point regards the issuance of the report, and that the, once it is issued, the engagement agreement will continue only insofar as the board requests additional services, such as public meetings in which perhaps Guidepost will respond to questions regarding the report. But as it indicates, only if the board requests that. And then, the sixth point states that the final contents, language, and conclusions of the report will be solely controlled by Guidepost without influence by the board, the district, or Varnum. The seventh point, and the final point, involves the materials and which ones will be held for a period of a year, which are the memoranda that's put together of each of the witness interviews, as well as documents collected in connection with the investigation, although subject to certain categories that will, as they are in the ordinary course, be destroyed, which would include drafts of any reports or portions thereof, individual notes taken by the investigation team members, internal communications amongst the investigation team, documents that may be subject to FERPA, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, documents exempt from disclosure under FOIA, the Michigan Freedom of Information Act, and then finally, documents that were obtained by the team pursuant to an agreement of confidentiality and/or anonymity, which would include but not be limited to the documents received from government agencies related to pending criminal matters. Those, that, those categories would be destroyed in the ordinary course and not maintained for the year, year period. Those are the seven points, some, all of which were somewhere in the addendum letter in the previous draft, but have now all been moved into bullet points at the request of the board.
Okay.
I would add just two things. You mentioned legal opinion. There were two questions brought up at the board table over which you asked to get an opinion. One was, if this document is signed, does it have binding authority over the agreement, original agreement? And yes, this would become a binding signed contract, should everybody agree to it, and that would come with the responsibility to adhere to it. So, it would actually modify anything that was in the original document that didn't fall in line with this. The second opinion you asked to get was whether or not the engagement letter between Varnum and Guidepost was valid, and the board validated that with, with two motions. One was the engagement letter with Varnum to begin with, asking Varnum to go out and engage a third-party investigator, specifically Guidepost. And the second was ratifying that agreement July 12th, when you ratified the employment of Varnum as your legal agent in order to do that. So, those actions and that contract was ratified by the board as well.
Okay. Okay. Anything else you wanted to clarify, or?
I think the, the letter speaks for itself, as it indicates, you know, the, the report is on course to be released on or before October 30 of this year.
Okay. And just, just to, just to speak to that, you know, there seemed to be some thoughts, train of thoughts, that there's, you know, there is more than one report, or that you might get the report first, or anything like that. Could you just clarify again, how many reports are being done, and who are they being released to?
Well, the final report, there's a single final report. Obviously, there was a first report, right?
In May.
This, this report that's gonna be issued on or before October 30 is a single final report that Guidepost has the final say on it, as indicated pursuant to the language in there. The, the report is being put together by the team, but it'll be a single final report, released at the same time to the public as to the board.
Okay. Anything else? Any questions, Mary? No? Okay. Okay, thank you very much, Ron.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so that is under discussion. So, now we would call for a vote. So, that was, that was discussion, so, so we're, just so everybody's back, we're at 7? 7A?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Erin read the motion, Colleen supported it, that was our discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. The second Board of Education Matters is Oakland Community Health Network Proclamations. Does somebody want to read those? There's a couple. Mary?
Move to approve the Oakland Community Health Network Proclamation for September as National Recovery Month.
Support? Colleen? Discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Mary, you want to read the next one?
I shall. Move to approve the Oakland Community Health Network Proclamation for September as National Suicide Prevention Month.
Okay. Can I have support? Erin, discussion? I don't remember voting on these before. Is this something new?
I think we did.
We always do? Oh, okay, okay.
I remember it, I'm vaguely remembering it from last...
Okay. Okay, so Erin supported. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
We will, I'll put the proclamations up on the website.
Okay. The next is the 2023 MASB Annual Leadership Conference, the delegate assembly appointment that we're gonna make. Colleen, you want to read that, please?
Move to appoint...
Move to appoint Mary Hanser to the 2023 Delegate, Delegate Assembly to be held November 9th, 2023, at the MASB Annual Leadership Conference.
Support? I'll support it. Discussion?
Have fun, Mary.
Thank you for going on our behalf, actually.
Yeah.
And I think Dr. Reese is going also, yes.
You are as well? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. DV appointment of Erin, Dr. Erin Rice, to the MASB Resolution and Bylaws Committee, a little bit different, at the same conference. Anybody want to read that? Colleen?
Move to approve Dr. Erin Reese's participation with the MASB Resolutions and Bylaws Committee meetings.
Support? Mike? Thanks, Mike. Discussion? No? Okay, thank you again, both of you for...
I have a question.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I, I don't really know what this is, Erin. What are you gonna be doing?
So, the, be working on the bylaws for the MASB, for the members of the organization. So, we're a participating organization to the MASB? So we're a participating organization to the MASB, and so they have a set of bylaws that we must follow, and if there's updates to that, school districts have the opportunity to nominate individuals, and only a select handful are picked from across the state of Michigan, so.
Very exciting.
So the delegate assembly will be voting on what the Resolutions and Bylaws Committee put together last year, and Dr. Reese is going to be a part of what we're doing moving forward that we'll be voting on in the next one. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Well, thank you both of you for taking the time to go and do that. Okay, so we had Mike support it. That was our discussion moving to a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Say nay. Motion carries. I was an aye on that. I didn't say it. Moving on to finance, is Sam here? Oh, there he is.
Good evening. I'm here to present today the cabling for the Drainer Road property, the main building renovation. We received three quotes, and what was in the board packet was the lowest bid from MTech for the cabling, fiber, and other network gear that's necessary for the remodel of the building. The other bids came in a little bit higher, $108,000 from Eagle, and Wolf Networks was at $111,000. So this represented about a nine-and-a-half percent discount among the three bids that came in. And so I just wanted to put that forward and see if you had any questions in regards to this. Again, this is all the, the wiring for the building and all the drops. I believe there's going to be in total about 264 CAT 6 connections between all the three levels, the basement, first floor, and obviously the second floor as well. So we are looking to see all of the bids that are coming back for both the demo and then the remodeling on the 25th of this month. But we decided not to put that in the package because we have the in-house expertise in Sash, and so he was able to gather the quotes after looking at the building needs, because that's actually where Sash is currently, has been located, his office, so he's in there every day. So just wondered if any had any questions in regards to this particular project.
Anyone, and Sash is here too, so. Go ahead.
Yeah, just making sure that we're considering, you know, OVA's moving over there, and if there's any expanded enrollment, if we have that predicted, if this covers potential, just small bumps up, and I know the physical space doesn't change, but making sure we have enough space if we have to move around.
Yeah, we actually do. That's a great question, Dr. Reese. We actually have quite a few areas that we can do some minimal expansion within the first and second floor, and so we do have a little bit of built-in, you know, space. So if that does happen in the future, obviously, we hope it does.
And besides the space ability to grow, I think is the question to Sash, do we have the network ability to, to grow as well? So does this proposal allow us to expand to more students than we'd be currently proposing to serve?
Absolutely, yeah. Well, the older kids will be using a lot of wireless as well, so. Just go ahead, I guess I'm going to move on. Oh, yeah, the older kids will be using a lot of wireless devices, Chromebooks, iPads, laptops, things like that. But as far as the, the drops go, there's plenty of drops for all the offices and any labs that we'll have.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just, I'm just curious, where does this come out of? Where would that be?
So this, this will be the Capital Project Fund. So that's where we anticipate the funds for the entire building renovation, obviously. And, and again, what we want to bring forward to, to the board on the 26th of this month is not only this for approval, but obviously all of the, the bids for, again, demolition, the new drywall, obviously, you know, the plumbing, electrical, you name it. So that will be coming forward, again, to you at the end of this month. So, and we, we anticipate that it will be approximately $4.2 million, but again, we will see what happens in totality with all of these bids. The bids close on the 18th of this month, and so again, it gives our construction manager about a week to vet all of these bids across all of the different categories, so.
When, when we were discussing with you the entire remodel for Drainer Road, all of the bids that Sam is talking about coming to you on the 26th were encased in that, in that package. We're hoping that you will look at the package and, and be comfortable with it, and if you're comfortable with it, we can approve it that night and things can start. If you're not comfortable with it, you can put it on the table for two weeks and ask questions, and then things will just start a little later. The, the good news is, is that when we brought you the project, we said we were going to be able to keep it under a $5 million cost, and I believe we are, we are on the road to truly being able to do that quite, quite well. There is all of this, there will eventually, after all of that, that we haven't brought you yet, there might be some furniture costs.
Yes.
Some other kinds of costs that would be coming, but in totality, we're confident it's going to be well under that $5 million threshold.
Mary?
I just had, sorry. I, the, the wiring, the cabling that we're talking about here, we already did some, we already did some work in the building. I mean, there's people working in the building now, so that was just to get everything started to see where we were at. That was just the minimal, and then this, it sounds like we've had some experience in the space. So instead of just looking, saying, I think we need this, now our tech folks have been there experiencing it, and our, and that's why we're doing this, the rest of this now.
Well, that, that's right. And again, we chose not to put it into the bid package because, quite frankly, we didn't feel like we wanted to, you know, pay a fee on top of this to, so we could do this in-house. And so that's obviously with the knowledge that Sash has, that's why we were able to pull this, extract this piece of technology out of the main bids, and again, not have to pay that fee as well, so.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sash, and thanks, Sam.
I did not.
Moving along to Section 9, is there any other unscheduled audience participation? Okay.
You want to remind people of the light system?
Kit, you want to go ahead?
You want to remind people of the light system, Heather?
Sure. So just a reminder, we've got our light over there that'll blink you and give you a warning that your time's coming up. Okay, thank you.
So part of me really wants to question each of you as to how much you truly believe in the safety and security of our kids. From what I have seen, I believe during the day, you do everything you can to make it look like security is a serious issue. Nighttime is a totally different ballgame, totally different ballgame. Most of our threats come from within our district. I get that. Looking at things that are going on around the country, though, other school districts aren't using, aren't weighing so much of their AI security systems as their priority security systems. They're using their metal detectors, and more importantly, they are using their security guards. They have security guards at all events. They are using their metal detectors at all events. They aren't relying on AI to pick up on something that might be in somebody's pocket, or what they may have left in a bathroom, which the AI can't see what's going on in the bathroom other than sensors for the vaping or the smoke. They just had an incident in Utica, New York, at a football game last weekend, where had a security guard not been paying attention and looking at what was going on, there could have been a very big mass shooting at their football game. Their security guard saw what was going on. He saw that there was a group that was already in. They were trying to mind their own business. They've got a group on the outside that's egging them on about something. They tried to get in, and the security guard said, no, you guys are not going to the game. Bye. And he made it very clear with a very strong presence and a very strong voice. He wasn't going to let them even get to the metal detector. Had he not done that, who knows how many people could have been shot. How many people walk in our schools in the evenings? Do you guys have any idea on how many kids or adults come into our schools on any given night? Most of the time, when I walk in, I have walked in, I don't see a security guard anywhere. And if I do, they're yapping with one of their buddies, or they're not paying attention at all. I am very grateful that many of the security people we have know who I am, but I've also started seeing a lot of security people I don't know, which is fine, but I think we need to take it more seriously. You want people coming into our school district and feeling safe when they come to our events. They want to know that one of our kids isn't going to shoot them, or stab them, or anything else, but you can't even come close to saying that that's not going to happen because you're not even using the metal detectors. Security is not always around. I have been to concerts. I've wandered the hallways before concerts and never seen a security guard, purposely looking at where cameras should be, making it very obvious I was looking at security stuff. Nothing. I find that really scary, and I think you need to step it up on the, on the evening issues, because unfortunately, these kids know exactly what is going on in the evenings. They know who and what is or is not being used, and unfortunately, I could see November 30th happening again at one of our events.
Thank you, Kit. Jill Johnstone.
All right. So today I wanted to talk about culture, bullying, and threats. We all have so much more in common than not, all of us. If you're here in the audience, if you're watching on TV, or you're sitting at the table up front, you all care about our children, our community, and our public schools. We may all have different approaches. We may have different beliefs. We might vote differently. We might worship differently, but it's clear we're all, we all care, and we all need to come together for our kids. As I've said before, my family moved here because of the school district. I'm hearing of people wanting to leave the district. Today, a close friend came to me with tears in her eyes. Her fifth-grade daughter doesn't feel safe in elementary school. She doesn't know how she's going to move on to middle school if she doesn't even feel safe there. Parents, we need to talk to our kids. We need to watch the examples we're setting, the ways we speak about and treat others echoes in our children. As is shown in every Board of Education meeting, our district has so much to offer, but our children must feel safe to learn. I wonder if we could add to SEL training how drawings and comments that depict violence affects others. I also wonder if there could be some trauma-informed communication training for staff and security. We are a traumatized community, and when parents express a safety concern, we need security to respond in an empathetic and reassuring way. If somebody's reporting something, we can't have people rolling their eyes or huffing and puffing because they're legitimate concerns. Even if it has been deemed not a concern, it's a legitimate concern if a parent doesn't feel their kid is safe. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jill. Kristen Carr.
In regard to the Varnum Guideposts addendum, never once did I hear Ron, I think that's what his name was, say that Varnum would not see a draft of the final report before the board and the public. Words are important, and we're listening. Feels like we come up here every meeting and we say the same, same things over and over again. Truth, transparency, accountability, over and over again. Almost two years later, to quote Bobby Roop from a couple meetings ago, you hear us, but you're not listening. Couple weeks ago, Buck came up here and told you, told all of you, that you forced him and his wife to watch the video of Tate being killed. It took them a year and a half in a Miller hearing to learn that their son had a pulse. Why are you not listening to him? That, that year and a half was your decision, your decision to keep the truth from these families. For what? To protect yourselves, the district, money? Now we have this report coming out that we already know isn't going to tell us the whole truth. If it was the whole truth, you wouldn't have attorneys telling employees not to do interviews, or former board members pleading to be released from gag orders so they can tell the families the truth about what happened on 11/30. You know, I've been challenging this district for over two years now, and my main goal has always been to fight for parental rights, the separation of what the government thinks they can do with our children and what they can actually do with our children. Parental rights seem to be an area that this district doesn't really seem to understand. Our children belong to us, and the fact that four children were murdered on your watch and while in your hands, that's where you don't understand that the rights of the parents to know the truth about what happened to their kids supersedes your precious attorney-client client privilege that you use to hide behind with that, or that you use to hide that very truth with. It's time that you admit your failures and take responsibility for them so these families can learn how to heal, and we can learn from your mistakes. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Kristen. Section 10, Scheduled Activities.
I'd like to just point out, about a week and a half ago, I had asked if board members would be available to come to the First Board Community Coffee, which is scheduled September 28th at 6:30 at the Parks and Recs Building, and many of you said that you could. We can only have three, so we have asked Amanda and Erin and Mary to be with us at that First Community Coffee. We have one scheduled in October, but Angela, I have to call your attention to the agenda. We have it posted as October 30th, but I believe that date was changed to an earlier date in October, so we'll, we'll have to check that and get it back to you. It will still be at the Township Library, but I want to confirm the date.
Okay.
October 12th.
October 12th? Yes, okay. That is just the correction on the scheduled events then. Okay? Next, administrative clarification?
I have none.
Final board comments?
So the only, the only thing I have is tomorrow, Mary and I will be up at Capitol Hill doing some advocacy work on, on behalf of the school boards and the MASB. We do have appointments with one of our, our senator, but we have not been able to confirm an appointment with our House rep, but hopefully we'll be able to catch him tomorrow, so, because he will be around. So we're going to learn a lot about the free lunches, Pura, and a couple other things that were passed in the legislature this year in the state of Michigan. There's been a lot of really wonderful things to education. It's just making sure that we understand how to make sure that they are fully utilized within our district and that we're not going to lose any of the resources. In addition, we have our own agenda items to make sure that we continue to advocate for supports and funding, and I've talked about this before, both from a, a mental health standpoint and trying to do away with unfunded liabilities and tie funding to them. It's so important. And then, of course, school safety and security, so. And to echo, I do recognize that 42 Strong was there today, and I think it's great that Buck and his team are doing the same thing. As a community, we're strong, stronger together, so.
Well, I just, again, wanted to thank you guys for going, taking the time to go, be delegates, you know, doing the actual work, not just talking the talk, but walking the walk, and appreciate that. The lettered presentation was great. The kids are great. It's nice to see all of that participation, and kids feeling good in school and wanting to give back to their own schools as young people. I think that that speaks volumes for itself, of how they feel about school and, and their school, and pride in their own school. So anything else? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.